Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the State Energy Planning Board's hearing on the draft state energy plan. My name is Nora Madonick, and I lead Arch Street Communications, a firm assisting the State Energy Planning Board with managing the public hearings. I'll begin with some housekeeping items. Non-English language support is available at this hearing. For those joining in person, oh, for those joining in person, we have ASL support located on the screen onstage. Spanish language support, if you need Spanish language help with either the translation of the hearing or in interpretation of a comment, please find a member of our team with a staff name tag. In the room or at the registration table for assistance. For those joining us via webcast, to enable audio language translation, please click the CC icon on your monitor and then select the language you would like for closed captioning. ASL will be featured on screen throughout the entirety of the hearing. Please note, this hearing space is an impartial setting. Promotional materials of any kind are not permitted in the hearing room, and anyone who does bring such materials into the hearing room or otherwise disrupt the hearing proceedings will be asked to leave. If you have banners, posters, flyers, or other promotional materials, please see a staff member at registration table. We'll be happy to store them for you until you leave the hearing. Before we begin, we'd like to thank New York City College of Technology for generously hosting us today. I'll now turn things over to Chair Harris.
Thank you, Nora. I'm Doreen Harris, Chair of the New York State Energy Planning Board and President and CEO of the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. Thank you all who have joined us here today. This is a hearing to accept public comment on the draft state energy plan that was approved by the State Energy Planning Board for issuance on July 23, 2025. This hearing is being recorded and professionally transcribed as part of the official record. The recording and transcript will be posted to the State Energy Plan website as soon as practicable after this hearing. I would like to note and thank a number of elected officials who have joined us this evening. We'll be hearing from them in just a bit. But in the meantime, I would like to introduce you to the State Energy Planning Board, which directs the development of the plan. I'm joined this evening by a number of members of the planning board. I'll start to my left for some introductions.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Hope Knight. I am President and CEO of Empire State Development. I'd like to thank all the attendees for being here this evening, and I very much look forward to hearing your testimony.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jim McDonald, Commissioner of the New York State Department of Health. Very happy to be here tonight and looking forward to hear what people have to share about this. And I'm very grateful for everyone coming out, but rather, nice night in Manhattan tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm William Suggs, New York State Pointe. Look forward to hearing from you all, and thank you for having us, and we look forward to having a good evening.
Thank you. Shortly, we'll be joined by Commissioner Roberta Riordan of the Department of Labor. As you can see, the state energy plan is developed by the planning board and our staff. We've been meeting for well over a year to reach this point of issuance of the draft plan, and certainly, all of our members have been invested in this process over that period of time. I'll begin today by providing some background on the state energy plan and opportunities to provide input on the draft plan. Then Carl Moss, Senior Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research at NYSERTA, will present an overview of the draft state energy plan. Afterward, we'll talk through hearing logistics, including how you can comment today. This should all take about 15 minutes or less, at which time, we'll look forward to hearing from each of you. I'll transition now to the development of the state energy plan. The state energy plan provides broad policy direction that guides energy-related decision-making within New York State. It includes a 15-year outlook through 2040 with recommendations for meeting future energy demands that prioritize an energy system that is reliable, clean, and affordable while supporting economic development, equity, and a healthy environment. And certainly, it does build on our progress in reaching those outcomes, as you will hear more about today. The State Energy Planning Board released a draft state energy plan on July 23, 2025, and we certainly do encourage New Yorkers to review and provide their input through written comments or at public hearings like this one this evening. Public input received in response will be used by the board to develop the final state energy plan, which is anticipated to be published by year-end. To provide further insight into the draft plan, I'd like to introduce Carl Moss, NYSERTA's Senior Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research, to walk us through the draft plan's broad planning goals. Carl.
Thank you, Chair Harris, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It's good to almost see you. I think we'll hopefully get to fix those lights a little bit. Can everyone hear me well in the back? Everything's good? Great. Okay, so as Chair Harris mentioned, the New York State Energy Plan serves as an opportunity to take stock of the progress and to calibrate the state's energy projections considering economic and political conditions and focus on our vision on the next 15 years. So I'll begin by walking you all through the draft plan. The draft plan released for public comment consists of two volumes, as you can see here on this slide. Volume one is the summary. It provides an overview of our energy system today, broad planning goals, and summarizes findings and recommendations from subsequent planned chapters in volume two. Volume two consists of the topical and analytic chapters listed here. We have also developed and released six fact sheets for the plan, and all of these materials are available on the plan website. So our approach to the plan has been to focus on the following five overarching goals. First, to ensure a reliable, resilient, and clean energy system. Second, to ensure energy affordability and equitable access for all New Yorkers. Third, to drive economic growth. Fourth, to advance energy technology innovation. And fifth, to continue progress on economy-wide decarbonization. I'd like to spend a little time talking through each of these, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from all of you. There we go. Okay, goal one. The state energy plan puts forth policy considerations to ensure that our energy system can deliver abundant, reliable, resilient, and clean energy for New York. We will achieve this by maintaining a diverse mix of both supply resources and infrastructure. Diversity in our energy resources allows the state to meet our energy needs while minimizing the potential impacts of energy supply disruptions and price fluctuations in any given market. Substantial investment will be needed to modernize aging infrastructure, address hazards, and support economic development, and this is true for every energy pathway that New York could walk down. I'd also like to note that we are in a time of great uncertainty in the energy sector. The analytic modeling conducted for the state energy plan reflects multiple scenarios to provide insights on a range of possible outcomes. Next, the plan considers affordable energy and broad access to bill-reducing energy efficiency and clean energy choices as essential for an equitable energy transition into New York's continued prosperity through advancing community and economic development. Even as we know that the average New Yorker spends less on combined transportation and household energy expenses than the average American, as shown in these charts, we know that we need to continue to focus on further progress in energy affordability. And advancing equity in our energy and climate actions means that New York is working to ensure that all communities, and especially people in disadvantaged communities, will benefit from the state's clean energy transition. I note that federal policy and financial support has been critical to energy affordability in past years. We therefore will need to continue to assess the evolution in federal policies over time and understand how they can impact our projections in the next 15 years. Okay, third, access to reliable and affordable energy is essential to attract and develop new strategic industries to New York, as well as maintain existing industry. Strategic industries like semiconductors and agribusiness have large energy needs and require access to reliable, affordable energy and long-term energy cost stabilization. As such, New York can promote economic development by meeting the needs of large energy users and investing in infrastructure and programs that can attract new industries, including clean energy leaders. Our fourth goal is innovation. We see the advancement of energy innovation as a critical tool to enable New York's energy transition. Innovation can help reduce the cost of and increase the diversity of energy technologies and services, whether by investing in emerging technologies in New York or by bringing existing technologies into our markets. And finally, clean energy faces particular external headwinds from both economic pressures and a shift in federal government priorities. Continued progress toward decarbonization and clean energy economy requires a sustainable financial footing, further policy action, and new technologies. As the federal context continues to shift, the Energy Planning Board stresses the need to be clear-eyed about what timeframes are realistic. Now, I'd like to pass the mic back to Nora and Chair Harris, and I'm really pleased you're all here and look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Before we open public comment, Nora, I'm understanding that we're joined by a number of elected officials. Might we begin by hearing from them, please?
Yes, of course.
Good evening. President Harris, good to see you again, everyone. My name is Phil Palmasano. I'm the Assembly Representative for the 132nd Assembly District. I also serve as the Assembly Ranking Member on the Energy Committee for the past 13 years. As you know, I've testified at different hearings, hitting a little thing on each one, but I just want to reiterate a couple of quick things. Again, I must, President Harris, reiterate the call for four additional hearings, Mohawk Valley, Southern Tier, North Country, and Central New York. And also, in addition of the comment period, an additional 90 days. And you received letters from our conferences on that. Everyone signed on to that. Talked about the importance of stakeholder input and response. Talked about affordability and how our rate pair is at a tipping point. Talked about reliability and how the NYSERTA sounded the red alarm of concern and how that can justify a pause in the CLCPA, because CLCP allows for that. Last night, we talked about land use with nuclear versus solar and wind and how that is important. Tonight, I'd like to just talk really briefly about fuel diversity and energy choice, and fuel diversity is very critical. We need a balanced energy portfolio. We shouldn't put all our eggs in the full electrification basket. Yes, wind, solar, and hydro should be a part of our portfolio, but so should nuclear and natural gas. We want a balanced portfolio. Just like your 401K, you don't put it all in stocks, cash, and bonds. You diversify it to protect it and make it more resilient. So we should do the same thing with our energy plan, to ensure energy reliability, to ensure energy affordability, and to ensure energy choice, so people can decide how they want to heat their home, how they want to cook their food, how they want to power their building and the vehicle they drive. And I will just remind you, too, that right now, New York only contributes 0.4% of total global emissions. .4%. China contributes 30%, has 1,000 coal plants, and building more each and every week. The CLCP only affects New York. It doesn't affect Ohio, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, and it doesn't affect China, India, and Russia. So we got to kind of balance the need of the tipping point that our people are feeling in the state of New York and what impact we're going to make on the .4%. We can get down to zero, but we're not going to impact global emissions. What we will do is decimate our economy. We will decimate our businesses and our families with this, and I know we have reduced carbon emissions over the past 20 years because of natural gas. We have reduced SOX and NOx emissions. So we are making progress, but it needs to be done in a balanced approach that takes into consideration affordability, reliability, and feasibility as we move forward. So I thank you for the time. I will not see you tomorrow night in the Bronx, but I will see you in Long Island, and I do look forward to seeing you at the four additional hearings I know you're going to be scheduling in the near future. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all you do. Have a good evening.
I'm going to run through the hearing logistics briefly so we can open up for comments. As the chair said, all input we hear today will be entered into the official record and reviewed during the development of the final plan alongside written comments. This hearing is being webcast, recorded, and transcribed as part of the official record. Please note, the purpose of this hearing is to hear from the public, and it is not an interactive discussion. No comments or questions will be addressed tonight. We'll hear a diversity of viewpoints from commenters, and we encourage you to listen respectfully to all points of view. Each commenter will have each commenter will have two minutes to speak. If you're using an interpreter, you will have three minutes to allow for translation. Again, interpretation is available today in Spanish. We will first hear from those who pre-registered to comment, and after that, as time allows, we'll call on those who registered today. Throughout the comment period, we'll display a slide with alternative ways to provide comment in case you prefer or need to submit your comments in writing. If you have any additional questions, please find an individual with a staff tag. So for the comment process, if you registered to speak, you were given a three-by-five card, an index card, when you arrived, and it had either an A, or a B, or a C, and so on, on it. That is the group that you'll be speaking with, and when your group is called, I'm going to ask you to please line up behind the microphone for your group, and I'm going to ask my staff to please stand. I have Ruhi on the stage right, and I have Alexia. So we'll send you to one of the two of them. When it's your turn, please hand your index card to the facilitator. The facilitator will read your name. They'll start a timer for two minutes or three minutes if you have an interpreter, and they will hold the mic for you. Please do not try to take it away from them. You'll receive a 30-second warning before your time ends, and when your time is up, we'll need to move on to the next speaker. We have a number of speakers tonight. If you do not have time to finish, we will encourage you to submit the remainder of your comment in writing. So again, we're going to first hear from those who pre-registered, and after that, we'll call on those who registered today as time allows. If you did not pre-register to speak, but you decided that you would like to speak, please visit the check-in table in the lobby, in the auditorium lobby, or let a staff member know, and we will add you to the list if time permits.
Nora, if I may interject just before you call up the first group, first, I want to thank Commissioner Roberta Riordan for joining us from the Department of Labor. And I do note, Assemblymember Glick has joined us. Perhaps we could start with her feedback.
Oh.
Thank you.
This is the FedEx commercial version. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify on the draft New York State Energy Plan as we navigate increasing federal instability and rising tariffs. Some are calling for New York to scale back our ambitious climate goals set forth in the CLCPA, but the escalating impacts of climate change and the human and financial toll of environmental injustice make it clear that going backward is not an option. Investing in green energy and strengthening our electric grid is not just good for the environment, it's a smart financial decision. Fossil fuels are becoming more financially volatile, expensive, and harmful. A clean energy future offers more stability, better health outcomes, and long-term savings for New Yorkers along with thousands of quality jobs. We must end fossil fuel subsidies and move forward with a strong cap and invest program to fund our transition. New York should prioritize truly clean technologies like wind, solar, and geothermal, and potentially nuclear energy if safely executed, while approaching renewable natural gas and so-called sustainable aviation fuel with caution due to their questionable benefits and potential negative environmental harm. The final energy plan must also address the enormous energy consumption of cryptocurrency mining and data centers. While vital to modern technology, these centers, especially cryptocurrency mines, remain largely unregulated, with many citizens unaware of the negative environmental, ethical, and social impacts. We also need to ensure that our disadvantaged communities are prioritized, and rural communities aren't left behind due to infrastructure gaps, as we've seen with the internet failures. Equitable access must be a guiding principle in this transition. Green energy is already creating jobs and driving economic growth. It is critical that we stay the course set out by the CLCPA, especially its focus on benefits for disadvantaged communities. Advancing a vigorous and well-structured cap and invest program to help fund grid expansion and green infrastructure is the smartest, most forward-looking path we can take, but we must act now and act boldly and decisively. We will have longer comments to be sent to you during the comment period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Assemblymember. All right, let's start with Group A. If Group A would line up with Ruhi, please.
Cecil Shibe.
Good evening. Thank you. It's nice to see you, Doreen. It's hard to go after Deborah, but I will do my best. My name is Cecil Shibe. I am Chief Sustainability Officer at New York University. I built my first off-grid solar house in 1999 and have been working on these buildings ever since. At NYU, we have walked this walk for a long time. We have reduced our emissions 40% since we started in the year 2007. That's the equivalent of planting all of Brooklyn, all of Manhattan, and half of the Bronx in trees. We are doing it now with these all-electric projects. They're not just fossil-fuel-free. They're comfortable, they're quiet. Our students and faculty love them. And I'd like to say here, NYSERTA's leadership has played no small role in helping us do that. It's very important. But that is what we can do at NYU. We cannot power our campus with solar panels and wind turbines. We are in dense urban areas. For those investments to have their full impact, we need the state and the grid to deliver renewable energy on the timeline set forth by the CLCPA. When I look at the cost curves over the past decades since I've been doing this for solar, for batteries, for other technologies, they give great room for optimism. And although there are headwinds, we wonder if the state is being sufficiently ambitious in this plan in order to meet its targets that we depend on in order to meet our own climate-neutral goals. For NYU, that's the year 2040, which dovetails very nicely with the plan in the CLCPA. Thank, how much? Great. That seems like a long way away. The people on this panel know it's not. The transmission and the distribution that will make these resources possible take decades to complete. Those plans need to be put in process or kept in process now so all of us can reach those goals. We look forward to working with you on this plan. Thank you for your time.
Christopher Rupp.
My name is Chris Rupp, speaking on behalf of Con Edison and Orange and Rockland Utilities. For over 200 years, we've served the New York City metropolitan area, delivering electricity, gas, and steam to over 10 million residents. We support the state energy plan's recognition of the importance of grid reliability and agree it is critical for our energy future. We need to continue investing in our energy systems to meet increasing customer demand and to enhance our resiliency in the face of extreme weather. New York City's electricity delivery system is the most reliable in the nation. Our customers, including the MTA, the New York Stock Exchange, and JFK, and LaGuardia airports, depend on our world-class reliability. Lowering greenhouse gas emissions is vital to achieving state goals. We're acutely focused on reducing methane emissions from our gas system and enhancing safety of service. We've reduced our own direct GHD emissions by 55% since 2005. We must continue to decarbonize end uses, including transportation and buildings, with efficient all-electric options. Over the last five years, Con Edison and ONR have supported the installation of 48,000 electric heat pumps and 14,000 electric vehicle chargers. Our customers are adopting clean technologies at greater rates, with more than 2/3 of new large-building service requests going all-electric. We agree with the plan's focus on energy affordability, an issue important to our customers. Last year, we invested more than $380 million in energy efficiency upgrades to empower our customers to take control of their electric bills. Our energy affordability programs distribute more than $300 million in bill credits to each year to support low-income customers. Finally, we call on the state and the city to address the regressive property taxes that are embedded in utility bills in New York City. Con Edison has assessed more property tax than any other entity in the city, increasing costs for all our customers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to ask Group B, please, to line up with Alexia.
Clifton Smith.
I'm Clifton Smith. I'm organized with a food and water watch. Shimon, Governor Hokel, for her dirty energy, energy. We demand that there is no dirty agenda in New York state energy plan. Instead, that the plan takes a true commitment to scale up renewable energy effective in the investment visibility. But we cannot slow down on our climate law target. The energy plan shall follow the CLCPA scrapping the plan under command to the clean energy. Governor Hokel thinks they are achievable, but we know they are. We have a situation and can meet all our energy needs using 100% renewable energy. New York has the strongest climate law in the country, so we are a leader in reducing our greenhouse and gas industry quickly. So this means that, so this means that we have to, we have to, we have time to reduce our fossil fuels. Yeah, I took 30 seconds. So, 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 so we have time. So I want to thank, thank you for sharing me for this, and I look forward to the future plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Osvaldo Garcia, and I'm here on behalf of Upros, Brooklyn's oldest Latino organization. Upros is an intergenerational, multiracial, and matriarchal community organization working at the intersection of racial and climate justice. One of our main goals is to ensure a just transition to a sustainable and equitable future for frontline communities, particularly in Sunset Park, home to New York City's largest significant maritime industrial area and second-largest industrial business zone. We have led multiple successful campaigns, most notably our contributions to the development of the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal, New York State's first offshore wind, offshore wind shipping hub, which will generate hundreds of green jobs in the neighborhood. The development of SBMT is part of Upros's efforts to lead the green industrialization of Sunset Park. After a decade of community engagement, Upros developed Grid 2.0, a vision created by Sunset Park residents to establish a regenerative economic strategy. While NYSERTA has been working with frontline organizations like Upros to achieve a just transition, the state energy plan conflicts with NYSERTA's actions and poses a critical threat to frontline communities, as it delivers an unjust transition and undermines the Grid 2.0 vision that Upros and Sunset Park have long fought for. Governor Hokel's approach over the last four years reflects a pattern of incrementalism and inaction, cultivating a state energy plan that abandoned CLCPA mandates, especially the requirement to direct 40% of the climate loss benefits to disadvantaged communities, and its 2022 scoping plan. This directly jeopardizes the environmental justice gains made by frontline communities like Sunset Park. Upros opposes the expansion investments in nuclear energy in New York State. Nuclear is a false solution due to its extractive effects on indigenous communities, women and children, ongoing issues with radioactive materials, and its high cost. and children, ongoing issues with radioactive materials, and its high costs. Funding should be allocated to upgrading our grid, our electric grid, supporting our wind and solar energy sources, implementing new transmission lines for offshore-wind energy, and advancing solutions that protect frontline communities while helping us reach our climate goals. Okay, thank you. New York State needs to be a model for a just transition nationwide.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have your index card? Let's just do it.
William Chapman.
Hi, my name is Bill Chapman. I run an organization called the Conservative Climate Activists. I debate climate science with conservatives. I have an engineering degree. I have been specializing in learning about climate change and climate activism since 2016. I believe that nuclear is an essential part of the solution. We've had about 4,000 deaths from nuclear energy in the history of the industry in exchange for an enormous amount of energy. We have about 740,000 deaths a year through fossil fuels from the smog pollution. Actually, nuclear is very safe per kilowatt-hour generated because we have received so much energy for it. In fact, solar is more dangerous because people installing solar panels fall off roofs and die, and they add up.
Please, let's be respectful of all commenters.
Germany dove headlong into renewables while France has a nuclear-powered, mostly nuclear-powered grid. Electricity in France is half as expensive as that in nuclear, and on calm nights, Germany often buys electricity from France. The movie Nuclear Now by Oliver Stone, which can be viewed on YouTube, describes how in the '50s and '60s, the fossil fuel industry realized that the replacement of fossil-fuel power plants with nuclear plants would cost them a lot of money, so they deliberately spread fear and donated money to anti-nuclear organizations to help them destroy their competition. The Chernobyl Power Plant was just obscenely poorly designed. No power plant anywhere near that bad has ever been built in a capitalist country, nor is there any reason to expect any ever will be. Our country has had a lot of problems delivering nuclear plants on time. That's just because we're really bad at building anything. It costs five times as much to build a mile of subway in New York as in Paris, and we don't even, we don't have any bullet trains, while every other advanced country has a whole fleet of them.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it.
Stephanie Doba. Hello, thank you. I live in Brooklyn, and I've been a climate activist with the Sierra Club for about 10 years. I decided several years ago to put my money where my mouth is, and I started with a zero percent interest loan from NYSERDA to help me put on salt panels. Thank you. So I'm still paying that off. This, between 2020 and this year, bit by bit, I replaced gas appliances that were aging and my heating system with electric ones in my home and in my tenant's apartment, too. I took full advantage of federal, state, and city incentives. These investments are saving me money and making my home cleaner and more comfortable and more healthful to live in. The final touch, National Grid, came a few weeks ago and took out my gas meter. I loved that. So even though my home doesn't burn gas anymore, most buildings do, and that needs to change. And that is your job on this planning board. The energy plan needs to be much stronger, have a stronger commitment to funding building decarbonization so more New Yorkers can afford to do what I did. What happened to cap and invest? Where is the commitment to pare back the obligation to serve with natural gas? Consumers don't need choice when it comes to climate change. We don't have a choice when fossil fuels are killing the planet. The more gas infrastructure we let be built now, thinking that we have a reliability problem, the longer we are stuck with it and the higher the cost to ratepayers for decades because the money is not going to pay for the gas itself, it's going to pay for the pipelines and the infrastructure. Also, I oppose nuclear because it is expensive and slow to build, and there are better and cheaper ways. But it will take leadership to do this. Despite the fact that New York might have only 4.4% of greenhouse gas commissions, it can be a leader. It can be a model for the rest of the states in this country and the nation itself. So I urge you to strengthen the draft energy plan, to give a firmer commitment to our climate law, and ensure affordable, clean energy now and in the future. I'm going to become a grandmother for the first time early next year, and I want you to think about my grandchild in 2040 and beyond, and his or her future grandchildren when you finalize an energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else in Group B? Group C. Could I have Group C with Ruhi, please? I invite you to come down.
Good evening. My name's Charlie Thomas, and I'm proud to serve as the Northeast Business Agent for UA Local 798. Our union represents more than 5,800 skilled workers nationwide, with 811 right here in the Northeast. The opportunity to grow our membership in this region's never been greater. Our work's more than a job. It's about ensuring that America's energy infrastructure is safe, reliable, and built by qualified craftsmen and women. That's why legislation like the New York Roadway and Excavation Quality Assurance Act is so important. It makes sure that workers on these critical projects are not only qualified, but also treated fairly. When projects are done right the first time, everyone benefits, from the workers in the trenches to the families who depend on reliable energy. This is a moment of real opportunity. Energy demand is growing rapidly, especially as industries such as artificial intelligence and data centers expand and put new pressures on our grid. Natural gas is positioned to meet that demand in a way that is affordable, reliable, and cleaner than ever before. With innovations in methane detection and leak prevention, we can build on our success in reducing emissions while continuing to support good-paying jobs for working families. Local 798 stands ready to meet the challenge. Together, we can build a stronger, cleaner, and more reliable energy future for the Northeast and for America. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Ralph Solar with Local 798, United Association. I would like to thank New York Energy Planning Board for letting us speak. The Constitution and Nessie Pipeline are not just about natural gas. They're about jobs, the economic security for the New Yorkers. Building these projects would create thousands of union construction jobs, welders, pipefitters, heavy equipment operators, and electricians. Local suppliers, hotels, and restaurants benefit during construction. And once complete, pipelines provide permanent operations and maintenance jobs that pay well and stay in the community. Pipelines also deliver millions in tax revenue for schools, fire departments, and public services. And they provide reliable, affordable energy that keeps our manufacturing manufacturers and small businesses competitive, helping create even more jobs. And here's the key: pipelines and renewable energy are not enemies. They are great, make a great marriage. Wind and solar are clean, but they're intermittent. When the sun isn't shining and the wind isn't blowing, New Yorkers still need reliable energy. Natural gas is flexible partner that keeps the lights on and the heat running. Together, renewable and natural gas form a balanced, realistic energy strategy that creates jobs, lowers costs, and protects both our economy and our environment. That's why building these pipelines is not just about energy policy, it's about giving New Yorkers work today and a stronger, more secure future tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Isuru Seneviratna, and I am an energy investor, climate advocate, and solutions architect with over two decades of experience. I appreciate the Energy Planning Board and Governor Hokel for being honest about the real-world challenges of deep decarbonization. Policymakers often face the energy trilemma of sustainability, reliability, and affordability. For society to effectively overcome this challenge, we need to generate, sustain, we need to generate and sustain the political will over many decades. To provide dependable, abundant energy essential for a vibrant economy, we need all solutions, including advanced nuclear power. By directing NIPA to build nuclear capacity, Governor Hokel is demonstrating the bold leadership that our state needs. Without it, we're even hooked on fossils. New York must not only retain its existing nuclear and hydro assets, but also expand advanced nuclear power as a cornerstone of a functional, affordable grid. I encourage the board to more fully integrate the excellent content within the nuclear chapter of the draft to the rest of the document. NYSERDA's own analysis showed that adding a mere four gigawatts of advanced nuclear would reduce the cost of decarbonization while saving resources and land use. So the plan must model at least as much by 2040. Nuclear New York's analysis, based on global experience, calls for half of electricity to come from firm, clean generation sources like hydro, nuclear, and geothermal. Beyond the electric sector, nuclear technology can provide high-temperature heat for industrial processes, low-carbon liquid fuels to decarbonize transportation, and power negative emissions technologies. Across New York, communities are showing interest in advanced nuclear. It only, not only provides an ability to reduce system-level costs, but also provide wages for the workers. A just transition must make low-carbon economy a benefit, not a burden to all New Yorkers, especially the energy workers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in Group C? Now, if Group D, I'd invite you to join Alexia.
Thank you to the Energy Planning Board for hosting this public hearing to gather stakeholder feedback on the 2025 Energy Plan. My name is Eon Simonidis. I'm from Nine Dot Energy, the leading developer, owner, operator of front-of-the-meter distribution-connected battery energy storage systems in New York City. Our mission is to improve the reliability of the electric grid, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and lower the cost of energy. We appreciate the energy plan recognizing the critical role of energy storage will play in the future of the state's energy system. Significant infrastructure investments are necessary to maintain a reliable energy system as New York expects record load growth in the coming decade. Entrenched ways of thinking about the electric grid and growing energy demand result in framing traditional infrastructure investments as the primary solution. While the joint utilities appear to give credence to the value of distributed energy resources, they are also proposing spending billions of ratepayer dollars on system expansion several times the size of the anticipated load relief they will need. New York is at a watershed moment with a unique opportunity to move beyond outmoded solutions for growing energy system and embrace more inclusive grid planning that fully leverages distributed energy storage to deliver the most cost-effective solutions for developing an efficient grid of the future. There are currently over 2.5 gigawatts of energy storage in Con Edison's interconnection queue. These assets will come online soon and are only the tip of the iceberg of energy storage projects that will be operational in the near future. Realizing the full potential of these resources will require a fresh look at utility tariffs and programs. The current structure incentivizes locating projects based on lowest interconnection cost and not on where the grid has the highest need. A properly-designed geographical component to identify, motivate, and compensate investment in the highest-need areas of the energy system is critical. These investments by developers would provide New York with reliable energy at a lower dollar per kilowatt-hour than the joint utility investments, but only if electricity rates are structured to reflect the true value of these resources. Energy storage provides critical services to distributed electric grids, lowering peak demand, enhancing reliability through ancillary services, and improving resiliency during heat waves. And it generates direct benefits to New Yorkers, reducing emissions by avoiding the need for polluting peaker plants and lowering the cost of energy by reducing the amount of expensive electricity needed during peak hours and delivering savings through the statewide solar-for-all program. Time?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm an associate planner with Regional Plan Association. RPA is an independent, nonprofit civic organization that develops and promotes ideas to improve the economic health and environmental resiliency and quality of life of the New York metropolitan area. We are here to voice support for the New York Draft Energy Plan, as well as offer comments and suggestions to improve and build upon the strong foundation that New York State has built. At a time where federal support for climate initiatives has all but vanished, it is imperative for states and communities to take decisive action to mitigate climate change as best they can. While it is likely that we will miss some of the near-term goals laid out on the CLCPA, we must continue to aggressively pursue long-term goals. In the last five years, despite setbacks that have put us off-track in the short term, New York has still made impressive progress in reducing economy-wide emissions. It is imperative to continue to push forward to a cleaner New York. There is clear evidence that our demand for energy is steadily increasing as we electrify more and move quickly towards an AI-influenced future. We need more energy, and if we want to avoid the worst impacts of climate change, meet our goals, and advance new industries in the state, we need that energy to be renewable. One of the best ways to meet our clean energy goals is to continue to build and support an offshore-wind future. As we have seen with South Fork Wind, offshore wind is reliable, efficient, safe, and necessary for New York's energy system. It puts people to work and delivers energy at a known and set rate. The state must continue to support Empire Wind and Sunrise Wind and lay the groundwork for future projects by supporting transmission infrastructure today. The state should also work closely with stakeholders to produce a clear pathway for recommitment to offshore wind goals, projects, solicitation, and improved procurement and implementation processes, upon the lifting of federal obstacles, making the state offshore-wind-ready. If we are to achieve a clean renewable energy system by 2040 and a net-zero emissions economy by 2050, we must do more today to upgrade and improve our energy grid. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to working with the state on implementing these goals and plan on submitting more comprehensive written comments.
Thank you for your comment. Alexia, hang on for one second. Could I invite Group E to come down to where Ruhi is?
They're just lying. I'll take your card.
Thank you. Back to you, Alexia.
Sarah Kirschbaum. Hi, everybody. My name is Sarah. I'm a high schooler here in Brooklyn, and recently I had the privilege of working with a lobbying group to write policy recommendations on this very energy plan. I'm really happy to be here with you today. Thank you guys for coming. I want to make it clear that I admire Governor Hokel's aim to reduce energy costs for New Yorkers. However, she has programs that do that for her, programs like Empower Plus or the Climate Smart Communities Grant Program. What we don't do to reduce energy costs is gut clean energy. And what we certainly don't do is build a pipeline that's going to cost New Yorkers their clean food and water and $1.4 billion.
Excuse me, could I ask you, please, to address the board?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
My grandfather came here in 1960, which would make me, what, a second, third-generation New Yorker? I love this city, and I love this state. One day, I would like to have my own grandchildren that can call New York their home. That's not going to be possible if we keep kicking the can down the road. We need to take real action right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Tom Lewis. I'm the Senior Vice President for Energy and Water from CSA Group Architects and Engineers. I'm also a New York State licensed professional engineer with over 30 years of infrastructure consulting experience, as well as being lead author on a book with my longtime previous employer, WSP, the title being "Future Ready: Your Organization's Guide to Rethinking Climate, Resilience, and Sustainability." I'm here to express my strong support for the draft 2025 Energy Plan. The demand for energy, and especially for electricity in the state, is rapidly escalating, and it is crucial that we adopt a comprehensive, practical, and balanced approach to meet these needs, while also continuing to expand renewable infrastructure. The draft 2025 Energy Plan recognizes the absolute necessity of relying on a diverse mix of currently available energy sources, including renewables such as solar and wind. However, we must acknowledge that renewable energy sources alone simply cannot meet the rapidly growing total energy demands and differing conditions across New York State over the next few decades. Therefore, it is imperative and imperative Therefore, it is imperative, and indeed unavoidable, that we continue to plan for and utilize some of the cleaner, traditional sources of energy, such as natural gas and nuclear. These sources are the only way to provide the predictability, reliability, and stability needed to ensure consistently sufficient energy supply, especially at times of peak demand on the coldest winter days and the hottest summer days, when it may or may not be particularly sunny or windy. Renewables and energy storage and efficiency technologies can then continue to provide an important and ever-increasing supplement as availability, cost advantages, and interconnection mechanisms steadily continue to improve. This balanced, forward-thinking, and pragmatic approach will also enhance our energy security and resilience, mitigating the risks associated with supply disruptions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Members of the State Planning Board, in normal times, the task of drafting an energy plan for one of the 50 states of the U.S. would be a bureaucratic task with parochial implications. In normal times. We are not living in normal times. We are living in a polycrisis, a sixth mass extinction, after a 40-year period during which the leaders of the world have failed to make a dent in the growth of carbon emissions that threaten life on Earth. Now, the government of the wealthiest, most powerful nation in the world has abandoned the global effort to ensure the survival of a livable planet. Members of the Energy Planning Board, at the moment when the energy production and consumption of wealthy countries is threatening life on Earth, you are tasked with planning the energy production and consumption for the eighth-largest economy in the world, an economy that is not only massive, one that leads the nation and the world. You are tasked with creating energy policy that will have a substantial impact on whether or not our children will have any chance of living on a planet that sustains human and other lives, or whether our civilization spirals through weather crises that will bring on deprivation, famine, social collapse, war, mad-mucks anarchy everywhere, and finally ecocide, death everywhere. These are the stakes when you are considering whether or not to expand our state's consumption of fossil fuels like methane. In this context, why would you consider recommending any new infrastructure for a greenhouse gas as dangerous as methane? Planet Overprofit and our allies have come here to voice our outrage that the Department of Environmental Conservation is holding no public hearings on the Williams NESE Pipeline and fast-tracking fossil fuel pipeline approvals. We demand that you press Governor Hochul and the DEC to deny permits to Trump's Williams NESE Pipeline and the Constitution Pipeline.
I'm sorry, your time has expired, but thank you very much for your comment, and please submit the rest of your comment in writing.
Security. Security. Please remove.
I'm sorry. Please, please. No pipelines. No pipelines. No Trump pipelines. No 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 pipelines.
So, as noted before, I'm sorry. I'm sorry if you can't listen to the rest of the hearing. We're going to ask you to leave. As you were told, promotional materials are not permitted in an impartial hearing room. All points of view are welcome here. And those who disrupt the hearing will be asked to leave, as have the folks who were demonstrating a moment ago. So we're going to go back. I think we're still on Group E. Yeah? So do we have additional speakers in Group E? We will be recording everything, and when the board feels comfortable coming back, they will. Okay?
Thanks for coming back, and thanks for trying to provide a platform for public civil discourse. I think we need a lot more of that. My name is Eric Dawson. I'm with Nuclear New York. The most important part of New York's state energy plan is preserving and expanding reliable zero-emission nuclear energy. In recent years, NISO has explained New York's electricity system with a Dickensian phrase, the tail of two grids. It's a short story. Upstate New York has a 90% clean grid with three operational nuclear power plants, whereas downstate New York has a 90% fossil fuel grid only after shutting down all their nuclear power plants. The moral of the story is simple. To decarbonize large electric grids in the 21st century, nuclear energy is essential. Why is this? Nuclear is the most reliable source of zero-emission energy, and it requires the least land, least materials, least new transmission lines, least backup, and least reliance on foreign supply chains of any other zero-emission source. Nationally, support for nuclear is now bipartisan, and it should be nonpartisan. In a nutshell, the problem with New York's energy policy in recent years has been overestimating the capability of weather-dependent renewables like solar and wind and underestimating the need for reliable nuclear energy. There are two main goals in the New York CLCPA, the 2030 goal and the 2040 goal. Even generous projections by both NISO and NYSERDA show that we will not meet the 2030 goal on time. I have the feeling that in quintessential New York fashion, we won't hit the 2030 goal until 2040, won't hit the 2040 goal until 2050, and may not actually hit any 21st-century goals until the 22nd or 23rd century. If you desperately want to goal on a timeline, here's my suggestion: We should simply build more nuclear power ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All comments are welcome, and we ask you to listen with respect.
Jean Halloran.
I'm a building owner in Gowanus, Brooklyn, and also a property owner in upstate Columbia County. New York, and especially New York City, must transition away from fossil fuels and towards renewable energy, but it matters how it does it. I would like to compliment the state on managing to get the Empire Wind project in Gowanus back on track. It's this huge 800-megawatt project. To stop it would be just nuts. However, the energy plan needs to take more account of local views on projects, not all of which are as popular as Empire Wind. Many solar projects upstate are enormously unpopular, in fact, because most of them are mirror images of Empire Wind. They take productive agricultural land, and where Empire Wind creates jobs, many upstate solar projects disrupt local tourist and agricultural economies and threaten job losses. The one I'm most familiar with, Hecate's Shepherd's Run Project in Copacabana, New York, will be located directly adjacent to a regional K-12 school with 1,400 students, where it poses fire risks and will be forever creating the incessant mosquito-like hum of inverters. Solar is great. On rooftops, on parking lots, on warehouses, on supermarkets, I just installed it on my building in Brooklyn. The potential of rooftop solar, I can see it on my block, is far from fully exploited, and the tax incentives that made it possible for me to do this should be expanded and to make up for the ill-conceived incentive rollbacks at the federal level. The whole state needs to have an energy plan that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much to the Planning Board for the opportunity to comment on the draft state energy plan. I'm Martha Sickles, urban planner, principal of UrbanCon LLC, providing sustainable planning, development, and energy services. We are at a moment when the threat of climate change rapidly escalates while our efforts to mitigate and reduce greenhouse gas emissions just as rapidly de-escalates. In the face of federal policy and regulatory shifts and drastic budget cuts, New York State must continue with the leadership that created the CLCPA in 2019. We expected the state energy plan to build on the well-crafted Climate Action Council's scoping plan, influenced by much public input. It must curb investments in gas infrastructure and eliminate obligatory gas investments. In New York City, 70% of our greenhouse gas emissions are generated by buildings, necessitating substantial energy efficiency, and building decarbonization projects to create cleaner and healthier homes and communities while facilitating larger buildings to meet the mandatory carbon emissions reductions of Local Law 97. To attain full benefits from building electrification, the state's power generation must meet the goals of the CLCPA to shift renewable energy requiring continued production of transmission lines and a great deal of renewable projects. Education and incentives for greater energy efficiency and demand management should be facilitated. Targeted investments must be made in disadvantaged communities and energy burdens reduced with assistance programs for qualified customers. All this requires substantial investment beyond the current resources deployed by the state. The governor must quickly establish the Cap and Invest Program and explore other innovative funding strategies. It is now up to our states to create and reap the many benefits from transitioning to a clean energy economy and show the world our continued commitment to mitigating climate change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Going to ask Group F to join Alexia. Group F? And please do not pull banners out of that bag.
I don't have any. My name is Margot Spindelman. I'm a national grid ratepayer in Greenpoint, Brooklyn. I'm a teamster and a shop steward, and Greenpoint, Brooklyn's home to the largest LNG facility in New York State. The headline of the overview for the New York State Energy Plan reads "Advancing Abundant, Reliable, Affordable, and Clean Energy for All New Yorkers." If Governor Hochul's Public Service Commissioner and the Department of Environmental Conservation approve National Grid's plan for downstate New York, which includes the Williams Pipeline, they can shelve those goals, put on their red hats, go home and warm their feet by the fires of a burning planet. We keep paying for gas we do not need, paying for more and more infrastructure which is being built in direct opposition to the goals of the New York State Energy Plan. The reintroduction of the Williams Pipeline is an abomination, given our climate law, which demands a transition away from fossil fuel, and given the absolute failure of National Grid to demonstrate any credible need for it. There is currently no gas shortage in the downstate area, and demand for gas is expected to decline steadily in the coming years. As the shortages that National Grid predicted fail to materialize and the initial 2028 shortfall has morphed into a 2040 shortfall, it is appalling that they continue to use this as justification for the NESI Pipeline. The New York State Energy Plan must reflect this reality. We need to stop sacrificing both the health and financial well-being of frontline communities like those who live in the shadow of the LNG facility in Greenpoint. Governor Hochul and this energy plan must protect New Yorkers, must honor our climate law, and must stop the larcenous plan to hold us hostage and to pay the ransom in the form of the NESI Pipeline.
Thank you for your comment.
Oh, sorry. Howdy, everyone. Good evening. I'm Steve Brinson. I work here on campus. I would first like to state my reservations about providing elected officials preferential treatment and the timing of their speeches. You know, obviously, they have places to be, so do we. I'm supposed to be on the other side of the building in not too long. Political figures already have enough opportunity to state their beliefs and opinions. It's known as their positions. I'd also like to state that it's unconscionable to ask New Yorkers to pay for the privilege of increased air pollution and destruction of scarce habitats, and that therefore the Governor Hochul and the state energy plan should recommend against the construction of the Williams and Constitution Pipelines, or Williams NESI and Williams Constitution Pipelines. The governor should also sign the repeal of the 100-foot rule, and the Energy Planning Board should recommend that. The governor should end fossil fuel subsidies, better regulate data centers. Longer we avoid doing so, not only will we have to deal with the air pollution consequences, we'll have to deal with the moral hazard of our economy being shackled to a corpse. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in Group F? No? Invite Group G to come down and join Ruhi.
Hi, good evening. My name's Allison Considine. I'm senior campaign manager with the Building Decarbonization Coalition, and on behalf of the BDC, thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we look forward to submitting lots of comments on the plan by the October 6 deadline, and we appreciate the tremendous effort in drafting this plan. To meet our GHG reduction targets of 85% by 2050, we're going to need to decarbonize millions of buildings in the next 25 years across New York State. To do this, a house-by-house patchwork approach isn't going to cut it. It's going to be too slow, too costly, and inequitable. There is some recognition in this draft plan of the need for a more neighborhood-scale approach, but we really urge a paradigm shift in approaching the building's energy transition through a neighborhood-scale lens. By focusing on street segments and entire neighborhoods, we can strategically retire aging gas infrastructure, redirect billions of dollars into clean energy systems, and deliver solutions that are faster, fairer, and more affordable. As neighborhood-scale transitions unlock economies of scale, we'll be better able to protect low-income households while creating union clean energy jobs. Specifically, thermal energy networks are a prime example of neighborhood-scale decarbonization that can reduce demand on the grid while building resilient communities. We appreciate the focus on TENS in the plan and urge the state to strengthen this plan further by regulating waste heat and maximizing the potential of TENS to be a grid resource by doubling the state's storage goal to 12 gigawatts, with half of that dedicated to thermal storage. Additionally, we believe the draft plan's recommendations for the gas system do not need go far enough. The final plan needs clear emissions reductions targets for the gas utilities and a timeline for system downsizing and transition. Any recommendations that incentivize continued investment in the gas system will only set us back from achieving our targets and put low-income gas ratepayers at risk, facilitating a crisis of skyrocketing rates as fewer and fewer customers cover increasing costs of gas pipelines. Finally, it's important to note that the state energy plan must incorporate the recommendations of the CAC scoping plan to meet the state's legal requirements. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, and we urge a neighborhood-scale transition to build a healthier, more resilient, and more affordable New York.
Thank you for your comment.
Michelle Greenberg.
Hi, I'm Michelle Greenberg. I live and work in Brooklyn, New York. I'm a parent of a son who just graduated from high school, and I'm a climate activist with 350 Brooklyn. Besides for living and working in Brooklyn, I very much enjoy swimming at Reese Park Beach in the Rockways in Queens. I applaud Governor Hochul for backing Mam Dani's campaign for New York City mayor, but I am angry and disappointed that she has not been supporting New York State's groundbreaking climate law, the CLCPA, which, if supported, would allow New York State to transition from climate-warming fossil fuels to, like, gas and oil, to sustainable sources of energy such as solar and wind power. Today, I'm particularly concerned about the re-proposal of the Trump-backed Williams-Nesi Pipeline. This pipeline would bring in frac gas that we do not need to the waters of New York City, causing unacceptable water pollution, and would cost an estimated $3.2 billion, which New York City and Long Island ratepayers would end up paying. In addition, building pipelines to bring in more gas rather than reducing our reliance on gas goes against every goal in the CLCPA. Finally, New York City residents will clearly be impacted in very negative ways, and many, many people, and I spoke to a bunch of people recently in all different areas, and no matter what their political bent, they were very opposed to this pipeline and are shocked that a proposal that was rejected by the DEC and the governor five years ago has reappeared. Governor Hochul needs to stand up to Trump, protect the health and pocketbooks and futures of New York City and state residents, and say no to supporting the Williams-Nesi Pipeline. The CLCPA by transitioning from expensive climate-warming fossil fuels to all forms of sustainable energy sources so that our children can survive and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in Group H? No? Invite Group I to come down to Alexia. I'm sorry? G? I missed G? I'm so sorry. Take Group G, right here with Ruhi.
Nora? It is H.
Okay, let's try H.
Sorry. Is anybody else in Group H, please line up behind Alexia over there?
Thank you, Ruhi.
William.
Hi, I'm here representing Neighborhood Technical Assistance Clinic. Energy isn't just a policy issue for us. It's something we depend on every day. From heating homes to keeping schools and businesses running, reliable and affordable energy is essential. We support clean energy like solar and wind, but right now, most New Yorkers still rely on natural gas. Without it, bills rise, families, seniors, and small businesses are the ones who suffer. We've already seen how unaffordable energy costs strain our communities. That's why we're asking for a balanced approach, one that invests in clean energy while also maintaining the infrastructure we need today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Andrew Holwick.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Holwick, chief regional officer for Millhouse Engineering and Construction, a full-service MBE firm that works closely with major utilities across the United States, principally on gas and electricity supply and distribution. As such, we are uniquely situated to see the growing demands on our region's aging system. The New York State Energy Plan is a well-researched, thorough account of the state's future power needs. Simply put, as we march toward a cleaner energy supply in the future, we need to have an all-of-the-above approach to meeting today's growing demand. Virtually all of the systems we are working on with nationally are either upgrading or expanding supply, so the issues are not unique to New York. This is a good problem to have, as it signals a robust, growing economy, more than it indicates inadequate planning in the past. I would note that the plan does not simply call for more traditional energy sources. The report also expects continued large investments in renewables, nuclear, more efficient building systems, and fuel-efficient and electric vehicles that will help mitigate the growing demand and increase emissions. Overall, the New York State plan is reasoned, sensible approach for economic growth and an environmentally sustainable future. The state should be commended for creating a workable roadmap to continued investment and prosperity that its partners can reasonably implement.
Thank you for your comment.
Brian Grimaldi.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Brian Grimaldi. I represent National Grid. I'm the head of corporate affairs here in New York. First, thank you to the State Energy Planning Board for the hearing and for the work of the NISERTA staff on a thoughtful plan. The modeling and the thoughtfulness to the analysis is second to none, and we very much appreciate the time spent on it. So National Grid represents 4.2 million customers up and down the state of New York, from Buffalo to Montauk. And we are partners with NIPA on SmartPath. We're building a ton of renewables in upstate New York with other partners into connecting large-scale renewables and distributed energy resources. We are building our transmission and distribution assets out to carry that clean energy to our customers, but we do have to account for our customers in downstate New York, which is a very different picture than in upstate New York, which is why we are pushing, we are recommending the Nesi Project. I know there are some folks here tonight that spoke against it, but for our customers downstate in a densely populated urban environment, nutritional district hard to electrify, times that need energy during the coldest days of the year, on the coldest hours of those coldest days, resource adequacy is a problem. We encourage the board to look more into the resource adequacy and security supply issues. We also would like to see some thoughtfulness around permitting and siting and the interconnection queue with the NISO. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment.
Thomas DeJesu.
Thank you. Members of the board, thank you for being here in Brooklyn. I want to take a special shout-out to Toriene Harris, who's done an amazing job over the years trying to pull together the various disparate kinds of issues that she's befell with, befold with. It's a terrible, terrible, tough job, and I want to congratulate her on her efforts. So I do want to mention, for transparency's sake, that I'm a former public utility executive, and I believe that in this particular climate, political climate that we're in, there's so much change that needs to be done. And I believe that diversity, and considering all the diversity that you are considering now, is a big, big plus for the region. The one thing I'm very familiar with is that we really want to avoid brownouts, blackouts, and the like, and that's so important as we go forward with an energy plan. I think that's critical. I do want to mention, as a Long Islander, I don't think that utilizing nuclear in an area that's already had a nuclear plant and so much tragedy over it, consternation over it, it probably is not going to fly in the region. But I will say that also, making sure that people's voices are heard on both sides of the aisle, people's voices, especially when it comes to locating facilities, all the new facilities that are planned, it's important that people have a say and have a hearing and make sure their voices are appreciated, because it's so important to get this right as we go forward. So again, thank you, Toriene. Thank you, members of the board, for being here in Brooklyn, and I wish you well as you plan this important energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in Group H? No? Group I, if you would join Ruhi, please.
Patrick Gedis.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Gedis, and I'm the business manager for IBW Local 1049. I'm also the chair of the IBW Utility Labor Council for the state of New York. Thank you for holding this hearing tonight, and I would like to thank President Harris and Commissioner Riordan especially for all your hard work in putting this together and the entire esteemed panel before me. I'll make this quick. We're here at a crossroads here. Our families, our jobs, and our communities depend on a reliable energy system, and right now, that system is under strain. New Yorkers rely on natural gas for heat, and almost half of the electric generated statewide comes from natural gas. That demand continues to grow. And that's where the Northeast Supply Enhancement Project, the Nesi Pipeline, comes in. Nesi would increase natural gas capacity in downstate New York, and that is the difference between families freezing in a storm and families staying safe and warm. The difference between blackouts and reliability. So let's be clear. Nesi isn't about replacing renewables. It's about buying us time while wind, solar, and natural gas, I'm sorry, and electric storage scale up. We all support clean energy, but clean energy hasn't grown fast enough to meet the demand we face. And Nesi is that bridge and the guarantee that won't leave New Yorkers in the dark while we work towards the future. This project means more than energy security. It means jobs across the state of New York. It means paychecks into local communities, including EJ communities. It means our members building and maintaining safe infrastructure. Thank you. Let's not forget, Nesi makes environmental sense. I'm there? Okay. Listen, I will put together a written statement to go before the committee. Thank you for your time, and good luck with everything. I'll see you soon, Long Island.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to mention, if folks want to talk among themselves, that's just fine, but we have a lobby for that, so if you use that, that would be great. Want to give respect to everybody who's speaking.
Sydney Laguillo.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here today. My name is Sydney Laguillo. I'm a government and community affairs representative for Hogman Group. We're a civil and electrical infrastructure construction company, which means we build and construct and maintain a lot of the state's energy infrastructure. So we also have an acute understanding for the critical need of a coordinated strategy and planning as the state energy plan puts forward, and how it is imperative to inform policy for the future. Some of Hogman Group's largest projects have been supporting renewable energy deployment, and so we firsthand get to see the value of clean energy in New York State and beyond the tremendous environmental benefits that these projects have, and it cannot be overstated. It also has allowed our company to invest and extend workforce development programs in disadvantaged communities. It has provided, it has allowed us to provide programming and give access to pathways in different careers and lifelong family-sustaining wages that the construction trades provide. Our mission is that everywhere we do work, that we're also supporting the local economy and connecting different players in the ecosystem, so educational institutions and industry partners and community-based organizations, and really uplifting the local economy as much as we can as a result of these energy projects. This is the power that it has, and it's, and we're also raising importance of this infrastructure throughout the state. It's really important as New York State creates, faces the energy crisis and approaches this energy crisis. Industry must meet the increasing demand and with diverse energy sources as we work to justly transition to a low-carbon economy. As the draft energy plan puts out, this takes new construction, grid upgrades, increased capacity, and an integration of new technologies to ensure that New Yorkers can keep their lights on and receive affordable, reliable, and clean energy. To close, I want to emphasize how much the New York Energy Plan means to New Yorkers as it safeguards our energy future and can continue us as leaders in innovation, sustainability, and prosperity for residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Christine Klausser.
Governor Hochul, fellow citizens, my name is Christine Klausser, and I live in East Village, New York City. I am here on behalf of my community, my friends, and their families in New York City, and so the future generations of New Yorkers can enjoy and love New York City as much as or more than I do. I want it always to be New York City or nowhere. Governor Hochul, we are standing here in New York, in a city that has seen what happens when corporations put profit over people's lives. We will not let history repeat itself. Why, if clean energy solutions exist, would we choose anything else? Make it make sense. The Nisi Project, the nuclear power plants threaten our health and safety and our climate future. Nuclear is not clean, it is not safe, and it locks us into decades of toxic waste and dangerous infrastructures. We refuse to trade our neighborhoods, our waterways, and our future for false solutions that serve only the energy giants. Right now, AI corporations burn through obscene amounts of energy, money, and political willpower, money that should be invested in real solutions, not speculative technology that deepens inequality and strains our electric grid. Every dollar given to AI hype is a dollar stolen from WIM, solar efficiency, and the modern grid we desperately need. We demand investment in clean, modern, and community-owned energy, rooftop solar, offshore wind, and storage solutions that create jobs and protect our planet. The future belongs to people, not corporations. The future belongs to clean energy and not nuclear waste. The future belongs to communities, not AI billionaires. Governor Hochul, New York has a choice. Stand with the people and the planet, or stand with nuclear risk and greed. We're here to say we choose life, and we choose safety, and we choose clean energy, and choose justice.
Thank you for your comment.
Laura Shindel.
My name is Laura Shindel. I'm the New York State Director with Food and Water Watch. We work to protect people's access to safe food, clean water, and a livable climate and future. We have over 80,000 members in New York State, and we are here today to say shame on Governor Hochul for her dirty energy agenda and for this plan. We do not need dirty energy in the state energy plan, and we need instead a commitment to scaling up renewables, energy efficiency, and electrification. First and foremost, Governor Hochul and her administration must stop fast-tracking Trump's agenda to build pipelines. Over 11,000 comments were submitted against the Williams-Nesi Pipeline in just a few short weeks, and we had no public hearing. Also, over 130 elected officials and still counting submitted letters opposing the Williams-Nesi Pipeline, and over 500 people mobilized to march across the Brooklyn Bridge against the pipeline. Nothing has changed since it was denied three times in 2018, 2019, and 2020, except Hochul cowering to Trump. And if Nesi was built, ratepayers would get stuck with the bill to pay for that infrastructure to the tune of $3.2 billion over 15 years, with about $7.5 per month per National Grid ratepayer. We, the demand is going down for gas, and we also should not be building nuclear. That is a fault- is a false solution. It is way too expensive, way too slow, and we have no way to deal with the waste. Governor Hochul needs to scale up building decarbonization, sign the repeal of the 100-foot rule, amend the obligation to serve, and in sum, stop Trump's pipelines, stop flirting with the nuclear energies industry, lower our energy bills, and cap utility bills for ratepayers, sign the bill to repeal the 100-foot gas subsidy, and stop poisoning Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities with a dirty energy agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to ask Group J to join Alexia. Group J?
Sarah Gronim.
Thanks. My name is Sarah Gronim. I'm a co-leader of the local climate group 350 Brooklyn with 4,500 volunteer members. Thank you for taking my testimony this evening. I would like to speak specifically about the section on the draft New York State Energy Plan that addresses natural gas. There's much to admire here. There's a wealth of information clearly laid out and some great graphs, but there's no plan. In December of 2022, as you all know, the Climate Action Council released its scoping plan that, among other things, highlighted the need for New York State to plan, quote, "the strategic downsizing of the gas system." Yet here we are, three years later, with the state plan calling for a plan. Let me call your attention to one consequence of this failure of the state to develop such a plan. As you have heard several times tonight, in 2017, the Oklahoma Gas Company, Williams, proposed to build a huge flacked gas pipeline in the seabed off New York City. Its own environmental impact statement documented how much pollution that would have caused, the harm to marine animals, and there was an independent report in 2019 that showed there was no need for that pipeline, which events have since proved so. That, okay, now I'm like, sorry. Because National Grid has now signed a contract with Williams that would increase natural gas into its area by a whopping 13%, Williams' Pipeline is back, right? Again, an independent report just published two weeks ago showed that there was no need for this pipeline and that it would be, as many people have said, phenomenally expensive, all of which all of us would pay for. There's so much positive good that we could be doing with this kind of money, right? And, but we need a plan, an actual plan. Did I make it?
Thank you for your comment.
Cecilia Ellis. Hi. I come from a multi-generational union electrician family, and I know that the future is clean renewable energy. The fact that Governor Hochul is even considering fossil fuel infrastructure in 2025 is shameful. The climate law mandates a transition to renewable energy, so why does this plan propose delays instead of action? We need you to lay out a clear vision for building decarbonization, reducing emissions across the board, and expanding renewable energy. The state must commit to the law and the state constitution and reject dangerous nuclear power plants and fossil fuel pipelines like the Williams NESI Pipeline. They threaten our air, water, and land. The NESI Pipeline has already been rejected three times because it will pollute our water. It must be stopped by Governor Hochul. The state energy plan should be amended to include an outline for the necessary, urgent, clean energy transition now and the funding to do so through Empower Plus, Cap'n Invest, and Gap Funding. There is no safe nuclear and fossil fuel that New York cannot move backwards. We need to be a climate leader, and we need Governor Hochul to act now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Raul Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raul Robinson, and I'm a Safety Manager with the Hogland Group. I was raised on East 222nd Street in the Bronx, and now I reside in Westchester. Since joining Hogland, I've worked in a wide range of infrastructure projects, from the Sunrise Wind Converter Station, Con Ed gas and electric upgrades, to major road improvement initiatives across highways and state roads. Currently, I'm helping to build multiple battery storage facilities right here in Brooklyn. Being part of these projects means more than just a job to me. It's about contributing to the future of New York's energy infrastructure, and at the end of the day, I sleep very well knowing that I'm doing my part to help make my home, New York, a better place. At the Hogland Group, we witness every day how these projects put thousands of New Yorkers throughout the Five Boroughs and beyond to work, helping to strengthen our local communities. They support countless small businesses, from local subcontractors to juice bars, corner stores, and bodegas, where we gladly spend our paychecks. They help to make energy more affordable for many families and businesses, which is real relief on real bills that directly impacts household budgets. And let's be honest, who doesn't appreciate saving a few extra dollars? And that's why I support New York's draft state energy plan. It's not just a document. It's our roadmap. It's our legacy and our responsibility. Without it, we shortchange the very communities we call home. I urged the Energy Planning Board and our elected leaders to adopt and advance this plan so that New York can continue to lead in energy, economic growth, and quality of life for all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Chris Alvarado.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Alvarado, and I am a field engineer at Hogland Group. I'm born and raised right here in Brooklyn, New York, and I'm proud to be able to take part in improving its future. I've always wanted to help improve the environment with sustainable infrastructure, and this energy plan is a step in the right direction. I am greatly invested in how we can always help improve the lives of my family and fellow New Yorkers. This plan will give us some direction on where we need to proceed with clean energy growth while still making sure the grid can support the increasing demand in energy. It will also give greater insight on how we will be able to keep costs at an affordable level for residents and businesses. I do hope that while in pursuit of cleaner energy, we don't forget we can improve other methods such as a more efficient building code for future construction. In the end, it's critical that we act today to ensure a sustainable, resilient, and affordable future for all New Yorkers. I'm hoping, once this plan is finalized, it will not only give us a clear path for clear, clean energy growth and efficiency, but also ensures that we are prepping our infrastructure to meet the demand. As someone deeply invested in the well-being of my community, I'm excited about the opportunities this plan can bring for both my family and for everyone who calls New York home. The time to act is now because the longer we wait, the harder and more costly it will be down the line. Let's work together to build a more sustainable future for New York and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Dandre Baker.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Dandre Baker. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I would like to extend my appreciation to everyone for being here for today. I am fortunate to work for the Hogland Group, a civil and electrical infrastructure construction company. As a civil estimator and field engineer, through my career and experience with the company, I have witnessed the impacts of renewable energy projects on local economies, how they've employed hundreds of highly skilled construction trade workers and supplied power to tens of thousands of homes, commercial buildings, and hospitals and more. I am here tonight to speak because I believe that New York is at risk of an energy crisis. Failure to act could lead to more frequent outages and greater hardships for families and communities. New York is a fast-growing, innovative, and productive state that I firmly believe can rise to the occasion and lead the way in supplying renewable energy. It is critical for the state to move forward with the draft energy plan. A coordinated strategy and integrated plan process is essential to meet the demands of our changing energy landscape. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Brandon Medina.
Hello. My name is Brandon Medina. I live in Manhattan, lifelong New Yorker, multi-generational New Yorker. I am an activist with Food and Water Watch and also Sunrise NYC. And frankly, I, nothing, nothing personal to anyone here. I don't want to be here. It's really sad and embarrassing that we have to be here. This energy plan is, many of us who fought for the Build Public Renewables Act, the All-Electric Buildings Act, found it very disheartening when the bill, when we found out that Justin Driscoll, a climate change-denying Trump supporter, was put in charge and wanted to really shortchange the promises. And it should probably come as no surprise now that when we have this hostile federal government to hostile to our wind production, hostile to our energy, hostile to the state on so many, in numerous ways, the governor has caved and has agreed to this deal with Trump that he has made it clear he has no interest in keeping his side of, that he is going to do everything to shut down all wind production. We need to see the governor stand up to him the same way she stood up against the right in supporting Zoran in attending Officer Islam's funeral despite massive criticism. She needs to do that with an energy plan that fast-tracks the transition to renewable energy and creates thousands of high-paying union green jobs.
Thank you for your comment.
Amato Romeo.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Hello. My name is Amato Romeo. I'm a local union 638 Steamfeder with 22 years in the union, which represents nearly 9,000 men and women in the New York City and Long Island region. Since 1884, members of our union have built and maintained the energy system that powers New York. I am here today to support the state's plan to expand nuclear energy. Since the closure of Indian Point, New York's grid has been in life support. In fact, reliability has decreased to a level that so low that our grid operator has warned the situation is endangered to the health and safety of all New Yorkers. We can make the grid cleaner and reliable again with nuclear energy. Repairing Indian Point with advanced reactor designs would create thousands of skilled trade labor jobs, reduce energy costs, and energy, and deliver much-needed reliability to meet the growing demand from housing data centers and transportation. Some of the key policies, directives for the New York Draft Energy Plan reflect NISO recommendations, and we endorse the following. One, affirm that New York will use its energy powers to work with the federal government to expedite the sitting and rapid construction of new nuclear reactor technologies for national security purposes. Two, extend and expand your admission credits to protect existing plants while committing to site exploration for new advanced reactors. I just, nuclear energy is a proven source of safe, reliable, clean energy that creates thousands of union jobs. We encourage the state to promote and develop its, to provide energy in the 21st century. I just want to say in a side note that the United States Navy, for the last 50 years, has been using submarines and nuclear-powered aircraft carriers to protect and defend this country from everything. I thank you for your time and listening to my voice in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Eileen Oser.
Hi. My name is Eileen Oser, and I'm with Indivisible 50501 NYC. I'm an environmentalist. I'm pleased asking Governor Hochul to have a meeting on the Williams NESI Pipeline, which has been denied three times, and to please deny the Williams NESI Pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. There's no one else from Group J. I'm going to invite Group K to join Ruhi.
Selman Kurtoglu.
Good evening. My name is Selman Kurtoglu. As many of the previous speakers said before, I'm here with Hogland Group, where I firsthand advocate for the energy infrastructure needs that we see in aspects of the work we perform. Prior to the start of Hogland Group, I had the pleasure of working local government and labor and legislature, where I also experienced the overall economic impact that these energy infrastructure projects have had on local disadvantaged communities. As many of us here will continue to express, I would like to acknowledge the importance of consideration to continuing to implement a focus on energy infrastructure investment that will ultimately focus on supporting the well-being of residents and technologies we're adapting to, not just as a state, but as a nation. Furthermore, as we work toward a more resilient and reliable energy systems future, it is critical that the workforce and subcontractor opportunities prioritize in a way that uplifts all communities regarding local talent and disadvantaged communities. The transition of renewable and resilient energy infrastructure must not only address climate goals, but also serve as a vehicle for holistic economic advancement. Moreover, ensuring that residents and businesses in disadvantaged communities have pathways into construction, operations, and long-term energy careers, which will help build lasting equity strengthening New Yorkers' workforce capacity. At the same time, the fragility of New York's current energy infrastructure underscores the urgency of investment in reliable systems. Modernizing and expanding our energy infrastructure is essential for maintaining grid stability, protecting residents from disruptions, and ensuring that the benefits of new energy are delivered equitably across the state. We encourage the state to embed strong workforce and subcontractor requirements into energy projects, with clear accountability to ensure meaningful access for disadvantaged communities, as well as serve as an incentive on future projects in support of the state's overall infrastructure. This approach will create good-paying union jobs, expand SDVOB, MWBE, DBE, and local subcontractor participation, and ultimately enhance the resilience of New York's energy future. Thank you to the board for considering the state's needs. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and the opportunity to share my support with the board's decision to move forward with the state's energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Michael Magazine.
Good evening. I am Michael Magazine. I am a youth climate organizer and lead with Sunrise New York City. I'm a resident of East Flatbush, and like the rest of you, I'm a human that is struggling through these trying times that we live in. From New York, all across New York, from Rochester to the Rockaways, we're struggling with affordability. We've seen, as our climate worsens and crazy weather becomes just another world-breaking summer, that our energy bills have gone through the roof. As this state has stagnated on renewable energy and resiliency infrastructure, the cost of inaction and fossil fuel reliance is one that we continue to foot the bill on. The energy plan of this state must reflect the values, the pain, and the future of New Yorkers, and that future is found in affordable renewable energy. And I don't mean a far-flung future. I mean, the actions that happen today will have consequences every day, month, and year thereafter. When we roll back affordability programs, half-ass climate law, build pipelines like the Williams NESI that won't solve any problems, we create countless more, more from leaks, the cost of construction, the increase to energy bills, and the local harm that comes from the very same issues that have not changed since the previous three times the Williams NESI Pipeline was tried. Clear-cut, the draft energy plan doesn't do enough, and at a time when this state faces a whole lot of challenges, what we use our plans for and what we need our plans for is solutions. Stop the pipelines, invest in renewable energy, and prioritize an affordability that lasts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Matt Murphy.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Murphy, and I serve as a Construction Safety Manager with the Hogland Group. I'm a proud lifelong New Yorker, and for the past 20 years, I've dedicated my career to building and maintaining New York's critical energy infrastructure. This work is not just a job to me. It's personal. I live here. I raise my family here, and I care deeply about the future of our state. New York is facing a growing energy crisis. Our electrical grid is struggling to keep up with increasing demand, especially in high-growth areas like Long Island, New York City, and Westchester. The New York State Draft Energy Plan takes meaningful steps to prevent this crisis from becoming a catastrophe. It offers a realistic and responsible path forward, one that expands clean energy while prioritizing grid reliability and resistance, resilience. I believe the draft energy plan strikes the right balance. It promotes cleaner air and healthier communities while ensuring that we have the dependable energy supply needed to power our future. Without this kind of investment, we risk blackouts, job losses, and threats to public safety. As both a worker in the energy sector and a resident As both a worker in the energy sector and a resident of the state, I strongly support the draft energy plan. I want to thank Governor Hochul and New York State for their commitment to long-term solutions that prioritize both clean energy and reliability. This is the kind of leadership we need to ensure that our infrastructure keeps pace with our needs, and that New Yorkers can continue to count on a safe, reliable, and sustainable energy for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Joseph McKee.
Hi, my name is Joe McKee. I live in Astoria, Queens, and I'm here with the Sunrise Movement New York City Chapter to demand the state energy planning board hold, or to hold the state energy planning board accountable for their state energy plan. The poor and working-class people of New York are already facing the compounding crises of climate change, from extreme temperatures that worsen every year, to flood risk to skyrocketing energy costs. These crises are overwhelmingly caused by the emissions of the wealthiest individuals and corporations, yet the draft plan would require those least responsible to pay the highest price in energy costs and climate risks. This plan represents a major step backward in New York's climate goals and existing climate laws, and now is the time for bold action to protect the working people of New York. I think the common expression is you break it, you buy it. Our grid is broken because of polluters, and it's time to hold them accountable and ensure that the state energy plan follows the law and recommends no expansion of natural gas pipelines and recommends cap and invest programs that would limit rate hikes on the poorest New Yorkers while continuing to upgrade our renewable capabilities and by making the most responsible for the climate crisis the most accountable. This is the mandate of the 2019 climate law, I'm just asking for law and order here. And this draft plan cannot continue as it represents a step back from that bill. Countless people depend on how we address the current challenges today, or the challenges of tomorrow today, and we can't afford to wait until the worst is upon us to take action about what we know is already coming. A plan that leaves behind the most vulnerable among us can only lead to more disaster until it's too late for another plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Josie Dorsey.
Hi, good evening. My comment is directed at Dr. McDonald. So my name's Josie, I'm a New Yorker from Albany, and I work in environmental health research, which means that I study pollution and how it causes illness. Many of the pollutants that I study, such as arsenic, lead, PCBs, VOCs, and DDTs, are in the seabeds and will be released into the water if the William Nessie pipeline is created. But you already know this, because this pipeline was rejected multiple times for these concerns. But now that Trump wants this pipeline, these concerns for the health and the safety of my community go out the window. It is hypocritical for Governor Hochul to pretend to stand up to Trump but approve this for him. It is hypocritical for public servants who are supposed to be building a better, healthier, and safer world for all of us to approve this pipeline. Dr. McDonald, you are a doctor working in public health. You know my concerns very well. You dedicated your life to preventing illness and taking care of the sick. Please do not allow them to poison this area and this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Phil Upsaznik.
Good evening, and thank you for your time and generosity in listening tonight. My name is Dr. Philip Upsaznik, and I'm a longtime activist in Brooklyn and current member of the NYSERDA Bronx and Brooklyn Energy Hub. Over the past five years, I have been committed to public outreach, education, and political engagement around climate and energy issues in New York City. This has been the primary commitment in my life that has led me to have conversations with well over 1,000 residents of Brooklyn. It is remarkable to see how consistently residents throughout Brooklyn are concerned about public health in the city and the increased harms of fracked gas dependency at large. A 2021 study from Harvard School of Public Health found that one out of every five deaths is attributable to air pollution from fossil fuels. It's 20% of all deaths. There's a horrifying reality that we are living in that demands strong and timely action. NYSERDA has produced a map of what they identify as quote disadvantaged communities unquote in Brooklyn, people who have been impacted for generations by climate violence. If you look at that map, there is a remarkably high concentration of disadvantaged communities in areas where there is fracked gas infrastructure, such as the entirety of the North Brooklyn Pipeline from Brownsville to Bed-Stuy, and then across Bushwick, Williamsburg, and Greenpoint. This pipeline design is intentional, with corporations like National Grid repeatedly targeting areas such as Brownsville, where I live, which has some of the worst asthma and cancer rates in the entire country. It is critical that we rectify these ongoing harms of environmental racism with strong action, and that requires us to halt any expansion to our system of fracked gas in New York State, including the Williams-Nessie pipeline. I call on the planning board to permanently halt any potential fracked gas expansion and to prioritize widespread investments in energy efficiency and electrification. Additionally, it is clear that we must set a specific emissions limit for the gas system. The scoping plan's integration analysis calculates that in order to meet our emissions reductions targets, emissions from buildings must go down by at least 85%. The state energy plan should recommend amending the gas utility obligation to serve and eliminating subsidies for new gas interconnections. We are at a critical moment in the history of climate issues and energy infrastructure in New York State, and I am hopeful that our leadership here today will take these testimonies into account in earnest, on behalf of the wider Brooklyn community, to prevent ongoing harm and begin building a healthier and safer future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. I'm gonna ask Group L and M to join Alexia, please.
Amanda Miller. Good evening, board. My name is Amanda Miller, and I'm an employee working for Hoggland Group. Not only am I a lifelong New Yorker who is proud of continuing to call this place home, but I'm a witness to the firsthand impacts of New York's energy infrastructure through my place of work. It is no secret that New York's grid is struggling to keep up with the exponential technology advancements happening today, and jobs, economic growth, and public safety are all on the line. We know that energy impacts everything, not just on a business level, but on a survival level for the people of New York. Transportation, manufacturing, appliances, food quality, we all cannot imagine a world without it, especially as residents who live by the city. No matter what side you are on, it is apparent that heat waves are becoming more intense and frequent, with advisories of staying inside becoming more common. However, with more demand being put on the outdated energy infrastructure, low-income DAC residents who cannot afford up-to-date housing will meet serious health risks soon. As one of the 4.16 million Newark graduates this year, I stand here not only as a professional, but as a representative of the Newark, the generation of New York. We are the future, and we need a clean and affordable one. With this plan, not only will we move towards a greater path of sustainability, but we will also be able to keep our grid stable as future demand for power grows. I stand here in support of this plan, as it will promote cleaner air and healthier communities as a transition to mixed energy sources becomes a reality. Additionally, with a year of significant hindrance of job growth in New York, a push for an upgrade will create open opportunities statewide for thousands of high-quality jobs. This uptick in jobs will also support local MWB businesses and suppliers, creating well-rounded growth for economic development in the state of New York for decades to come. With this, I advocate for the Energy Planning Board and our elected leaders to advance this plan so that New York can remain a leader in energy, economic growth, and quality of life for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Samuel Aludo.
Good evening, I speak today, I speak on behalf of the Building Trade Employers Association, or the BTEA. The BTEA represents more than 1,200 union construction managers, general contractors, and special trades subcontractors across New York City. Collectively, our members are responsible for about $20 billion of the construction market each year. We're the largest organization of union contractors in the country. Our members hire union workers with exceptionally high wages, run the safest job sites in New York City, and we develop critical civil infrastructure projects for the New York City, New York State, and the federal government. And so as an organization, we publicly support increasing energy capacity to bring down costs and provide good-paying union jobs to New Yorkers. That's why we support the draft state energy plan. We need an all-above approach to expanding energy, whether it's expanding nuclear, wind, solar, or carbon-based energy sources. We should not shut down opportunities to build energy projects that will contribute to lower bills and more well-paying union contractor jobs. Frankly, to build in New York, we really need cheaper energy. When we're making concrete foundations, you're replacing electrical systems, or you're developing roofing and water solutions, it requires a tremendous amount of energy. The current and projected output of green energy won't meet the demands of our members on their own, which is why we also support the Nessie project. We need more energy capacity in the state, and Nessie will supply the infrastructure necessary to deliver higher energy capacity, which will drive rates down. And beyond our members, the economy of New York is growing at a rate which current energy production can't meet, and we need real solutions to New York's energy supply bottlenecks, and Nessie can reply reliably deliver more energy. And we also appreciate Nessie's commitment to using union labor, which will bring thousands of high-paying jobs. We're in an affordability crisis, and we cannot afford to throw away hundreds of thousands of high-paying state jobs. And so thank you to the New York State Energy Planning Board and NYSERDA for allowing us to testify today.
Thank you for your comment.
Brett Thomason.
Hi, thank you. I am, my name is Brett Thomason. I am the political director at Steamfitters Local 638. I appreciate the time tonight to testify on this draft plan. Our union represents nearly 9,000 highly skilled and trained steamfitters in New York City and Long Island. Since 1884, they have been providing power, heating, and cooling to New Yorkers. And as a union, we support an all-of-the-above energy strategy that prioritizes reliability, affordability, and most importantly, the creation of good union jobs. We will be submitting more detailed written comments on the many aspects of this draft plan that affect our members. So just briefly tonight, I want to touch on a few of the areas of this plan that we are supportive of and that we are encouraged by, in our commitment to building and maintaining the infrastructure that's going to power the next generation in New York. That means modernizing and strengthening the gas system that we need in the near term and the medium term, and we rely on currently. It also means building out and scaling out new next generations of clean energy. For union steamfitters, that means jobs in advanced nuclear generation. It means thermal energy networks at scale and at a neighborhood level. It means building energy efficiency and building out and developing the next generation of zero and low-carbon alternative fuels. All of these will provide a pipe-to-pipe transition to clean energy that will not only utilize the skill and education of our members, but will move New York into the next generation of the clean energy economy and make it a leader. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Chair Harris, that is the last commenter. Turn back to you.
Thank you very, thank you very much. We will now close today's hearing, as we are at the end of our scheduled time for today. On behalf of the State Energy Planning Board, I do want to thank all of our attendees and those who provided comments. We certainly, we certainly will take them into account as we seek to finalize this plan by year end. I'd like to briefly ask my fellow members of the Energy Planning Board if they had any closing remarks. Dr. McDonald?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Harris. Yet very informative evening, a lot of diverse opinion, and a lot to consider. Really appreciate people coming out tonight, and thank you so much.
Commissioner Riordan.
Thank you so much. I want to echo what Dr. McDonald said. This was a really great conversation, and I really thank all of you for coming out and letting us know your thoughts. And it was a really remarkable conversation to hear from all of you.
Thank you. And Mr. Sutts.
I want to thank everyone for all of your comments and the knowledge that you brought to the table, understanding that there are a large, diverse resource of different types of energy out there, and also bringing it, bringing forth your concerns about the community.
Excuse me. Chair Harris, I'm so sorry, but someone missed the call for M, and we have one more commenter.
We are happy to hear from the final commenter, and if folks can put the slide up with the next series of hearings, I'd appreciate it in the meantime. Thank you.
Avalon Akashi.
Good evening, apologies for being late to coming here. I should have been further back in line. Yeah, my name is Avalon Akashi. I live in Crown Heights, Brooklyn. I am also a member of the Sunrise New York City Chapter. We are a movement of young New Yorkers organizing for climate solutions that uplift the working class and frontline communities. This month, we are launching a campaign to make energy issues understandable for everyday people and align ourselves with organizations and elected officials who will ensure that New Yorkers can access clean energy as a transitional step towards a Green New Deal. Rising costs and recently hot weather are hitting people hard. New York City hit over 100 degrees Fahrenheit on June 24th, but that didn't stop people that day from lining up at the polls to vote Zoran Mamdani as a Democratic nominee for mayor. I witnessed it firsthand at my local poll site. New Yorkers pay some of the highest electricity rates in the nation, and they don't want energy rates to go up, but it seems like that might happen with this current draft energy plan. Indeed, one of the key factors for our decision to launch an energy-focused campaign was Con Edison's announcements that it might increase electric and gas bills as soon as 2026. Does it make sense for utility monopolies like Con Edison, who reek in millions in profits every year, to make people pay for upgrades to in-city fossil fuel plants when New York has promised to dramatically cut greenhouse gas emissions by 2030? Okay, speeding up. This is not just about climate change in the far-off future, this is about people's day-to-day reality. I'm here tonight to ask you, on the Energy Planning Board, to revise and submit a final energy plan that invests in our health and safety while propelling us towards our promises for 2030 and 2050. We are less than five years away from 2030, so if we're serious about moving off of fossil fuels and ensuring people can turn on their ACs for the next 100-degree heat wave, we must act now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for the final comment. As you see here, you can also provide comments at another hearing. Our next hearing is tomorrow in the Bronx at 11:00 AM at Bronx Community College. You can find the meeting link and other details on our State Energy Plan website. Thank you all, and with that, I will close this public hearing.